So everybody seated? Thank you. Now we get to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Yes.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Caldera.
Here.
All right. Thank you. So tonight, as in every meeting, before we get to the agenda items, we have a public comment section for anyone who wishes to make a comment for anything that is not on the agenda. There's a few members in the audience, but I think they're all here for the following items. So no one is going to make any public comment for something that is not on the agenda. So we will close the public comment section. We will go right to our consent calendar. So we will ask for a motion on the consent calendar unless somebody wants to bring it out of consent and discuss it. Do we have a second on the consent?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Metcalf.
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy.
Aye.
Commissioner Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman.
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So now to the main order of business here. This is the Tambridge Residences, a review and possible recommendation to approve modifications to the colors of the east elevation of Building 1 facing Nellan Avenue and Highway 101. This is just for that facade of the building, and Director Wolf will make a presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Chase, Commissioners. I'm going to make a brief presentation and then hand it over this evening to the applicants who are here this evening. But to start, just to go into a little bit of background, pursuant to an agreement between the town and McFarlane Development Company, the applicant, back in March, I believe earlier this year, agreed to present revised color schemes to the town for the east elevation of Building 1. There's the image of the east elevation of Building 1 up on the screen today in response to concerns that were raised after the original colors were first applied to the structure. So the first time this came up in a public meeting and first time colors were proposed were, or modifications were proposed to the original scheme, was at the Joint Planning Commission Town Council hearing on April 19th earlier this year, where comments from both the Town Council and the Planning Commission were provided to the applicant, and direction was given by the Town Council to, for the applicant to come back and present some, after listening to the comments, present some revised options. The minutes to that meeting are enclosed and attached to your, the staff report in your packet. You've received the now modified color schemes in your packets as well. There's four new options, actually. I think there's five. One of them's not in your packet. There's actually a fifth one, I think, McFarlane will be presenting this evening. And in addition, they have mocked up a couple of sections, and maybe I'll go straight to that in the staff packet. And really, the screen is probably not the best medium to review these. We have boards here that I think are better.
Excuse me, could you adjust the lighting? That might help.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the one right above. That's the problem. That's it. Thank you.
These were some photographs that I took last week in preparation of putting together the package that shows some of the mockups, at least portions of the mockups with, in this case, Option 1, which shows the darker pro dema color or the material applied instead of the lighter pro dema color, and still two of the other colors, the ponderosa and salsify colors that were, are already on the building. There's another area as well that was mocked up to show at least a portion of what the east elevation would look like, or proposed to be look like. Notice of this meeting was mailed to all property owners and residential tenants within 500 feet of the property mailed. We also mailed additional notices to those residents located within the Casa Madera subdivision, not within 500 feet of the property, so all residents of Casa Madera got this notice mailed to them. We posted information about the hearing on the town's website, sent an email with information about the hearing to all those signed up for the newsflash e-notifications from the Planning and Building Department and the weekly newsletter, those signed up for Planning Commission agendas, posted information about the hearing on nextdoor.com for all users in Corte Madera. We received one public comment prior to the publishing the public notice, I'm sorry, prior to publishing the staff report, and that's included in your packet as well as an attachment. We've received one more email since Friday, which I've put out on the dais for you, and also is included on the back table as well for the public to view. We're here, we're just recommending that the Planning Commission discuss the color schemes and listen to public comments and move forward with an approval by motion to recommend to the Town Council specific modifications to these existing color schemes. So with that, I'm gonna finish my presentation and answer any questions that you may have for me before getting into a presentation, which I think should be relatively brief, but a presentation by McFarlane Partners and representatives who are here today.
Thank you. That's great. So who will step up first from McFarlane to make the presentation? Later, we'll have a public comment on this. So please.
My name is Eric. I'm with TCA Architects. Speaking to the microphone.
Is it working? Okay. And thank you for having me out again to work with you to make these adjustments. With Britt's help from McFarlane, I believe that we have everything here to review, from the initial entitled and approved design and samples, to the as-built situation that we all reviewed earlier this year. And we've also brought the options that we looked at April 19th that involved these four options that we discussed, and at the end of that discussion, asked to see some more options as well as these mockup studies. The mockup studies included the dark brown pro dema and the lighter pro dema to compare, and that's what we just saw on the screen. So what we'd like to talk with you about specifically this evening is the response to that. We've brought five different options for including new color combinations that will simplify the building and round out so that we have a consistent palette with the other three sides of this building. I think that's important for when you are a resident on this, excuse me, site, to have some continuity and simplification. It will also help bring down the tones of this east side of Building 1 from the freeway view, which has these, the pale pro dema towers, if you will, right now that stand out a bit. So on Option 1, this includes the dark brown pro dema in place of the pale. It uses the two salsify and ponderosa that are used elsewhere in the building, and it adds a trim piece so that we can break down the scale of the building and have the lighter salsify on the top and the darker below, and then alternate to further break down the scale of the building. Then Option 2 uses the same paint idea but leaves the lighter color pro dema that's out there now. Option 3 is basically a variation of Option 1 where the two colors are inverted. So you'll notice here that the majority of the paint is that lighter salsify color, with the darker being the top part to act to reduce the look of the height of the building in those component sections. Option 4 uses the same paint idea in Option 3, but shows you what that looks like if you left the lighter color pro dema in place, which is what we see on the mockup out at the site now. Option 5 simply takes away the trim piece at the top part of the building and leaves it one monolithic color, using the same salsify and ponderosa alternating to break down the We've had some good discussion informally and casually before this, and I enjoyed hearing your comments. I personally recommend Number 3. I think that it serves to quiet down the building from the freeway side, and I think that it helps to wrap all four sides of the building into a coherent texture and color that makes sense when you're using the site. I also think that in a residential building of this type and this style, you don't want too much dark. It's more of a contemporary, more of a bold feeling, and I think this has some articulation with the added trim piece and the delineation of the top that's a bit more traditional and vernacular to the style that this project is going towards. So I think it helps to kind of wrap things up and simplify things. With that, I invite your comments and questions, and I know the owner's here to be included in that discussion. Thank you. Before you depart, do any of you have any questions for this gentleman from TCA?
I do.
Yes, Phyllis.
Looking at Number 5, and then at Number 3. Do you envision doing 3 without what I call the stripe, you call the trim? Because that, to me, just emphasizes the roof and makes it more obvious, whereas if the color stays the same, the light color, it will just blend. Because I understand what you mean about having more of the lighter color. Just as I say-
Yeah, it would invert the placement of the dark and the light.
Right, but without having what you call the trim. To me, it's just a stripe that stands out.
Okay. That's certainly an option. Again, it wouldn't be my recommendation, because this is more of a contemporary move. It's a bold gesture. This has the scale and articulation of the rest of the project that has those sizes of elements consistently on-site.
You mean Number 3? You were pointing to Number 4.
I'm sorry. They do the same thing. They have the stripe at the top.
To me, it just breaks it up more, and I just like it to blend.
Okay. Any other questions for this gentleman? Bob?
Eric, when you talked about putting the darker pro dema up, is that, I know it's on parts of the other sides of the building, would you be replacing all of the pale pro dema on the entire project?
No, just on the freeway side.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, that's hard.
I'd like to have a question too, very quickly, similar to what you just were asked. Do you think, in your opinion, that if we were to choose the pro dema moka, would go well with the rest of the building that has predominantly the pale pro dema? Or what do you think personally?
I personally think that is the right thing to do, because the other sides of this building won't have the dark pro dema. The site plan relies on these six buildings to work together in sort of a village-like atmosphere, and they're different. They're not all the same building with just a different color scheme. They're different architecture, using a variety of these colors. So the fact that there is the light pro dema on other buildings on the site, I think that works really well, because they use that light pro dema consistently on all four sides of those buildings. So you get more of a village-like feeling where one building has the light and the other has the dark.
Thank you.
There's a coherent system behind that.
Can I ask a question? So just to be clear then, because I think right now on the south side, as that building wraps, the light pro dema is still on the south side, correct? But you're saying it would be, the entire building would show the dark pro dema for that building?
Yes.
Is that right?
The freeway building that we're talking about?
Yeah, the freeway building.
On the south side?
Yeah.
At one time, there was a spot where there was the 2. We're gonna, it'll all be the same.
It would all be dark on the entire building on all four elevations of that building? Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. So the courtyard side or the, in the west side of the building does have the dark pro dema on it now? Correct. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you, Eric. Yes, would you please pass the baton to the next McFarlane representative? Or is there one? Yes?
I don't have anything to present if anybody has questions. I'm gonna answer questions.
All right. So you're the man to ask if you guys have any questions for this gentleman. I don't hear any-
My name's Dirk, by the way. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Dirk. No questions for Dirk?
No.
All right. You're off the hook. Thank you. All right. So with that said, nothing else that you guys want to present about the options at this time? All right. Okay. Thank you. At this point, then, we will open it up for public comment on what you've seen before you. So if you're going to make a statement, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name's Stephanie Akri. I live in San Rafael. I'm not a Corte Madera resident, but I do drive by on the freeway and see this abomination all the time. I mean, it's so ugly, it really makes me cringe. So I am so much in favor of a paint redo, and I agree absolutely that Number 3 is the best option, because it is the softest. Some of the others look like a penitentiary, and the orange is a no-no. So I am curious, though, why does this Option 1 not match that Option 1? It does?
It is a piece.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, that's all I have to say, but I vote for Option 3.
Thank you very much. All right. We have some other members of the public that usually have something to speak up with, but I don't see you guys standing up. So Mr. Harlock?
I actually didn't plan, Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood Avenue. I didn't plan on speaking to this item, but I think the architect made a good case for Number 3 of what we see before us, and I think it will quiet the building. I do agree that the darker Option 5 in 1 are a little, yeah, a little urban, a little too strong. So I think, stumbling in my syntax here, I hate to criticize other architects, and I'm not. I'm very happy that they're willing to take another look at this. A vote for 3. That's all I need to say.
Thank you very much. All right. Ms.?
Becky Reed, 15 Council Crest. Wasn't going to say anything, and it seems obvious, nobody's going to vote for the lighter wood, but just want to vote absolutely please the darker wood.
All right. Thank you. All right. Since there are no other members of the public willing to step up and make a comment, then we'll close the public comment section and bring it back up here. So after hearing from the architect and the public, does anybody have any questions for staff at this point before we go into a discussion?
Colors?
Nicolau?
No.
I noticed.
Jennifer? No questions. Dr. Bundy?
No.
Okay. Phyllis, do you have any?
Please. This is the lighter color.
Is it heavy?
My exercise for the day. The darker color. Did you do this on purpose, make it so heavy?
I think we know where those came from. Side of the building.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that said, I'm gonna pull the members of the commission here to see what you want to discuss about it. So the first option is to throw out your thoughts about options, or if you have a solid choice, please, by all means, bring that forward. So Phyllis, I'm gonna start with you and ask you what you lean toward, or if you have a solid choice, what you, how would you rank these?
I would eliminate the two options that have the pale pro dema. I think the audience and just discussions we've had that this is not what people want, and the rest of the building, or at least the front of the building, is also the darker, correct? So I kind of like things cohesion. I don't want the village. My only other comment is the one I asked. I certainly like 3, which was the one I preferred when we had four options, but I would like, as I said even when we met with Britt, I would like to see that trim gone on the lighter panel. So that's where I stand.
Yes. Adam?
No, I think it would be good to, when you get a chance, to talk about disclosures and that.
You're absolutely right. Right. So Number 3 and-
Number 3, stripeless.
Okay.
Trimless, whatever.
Right.
You want, are you gonna explain about the disclosure?
Yes, I will. So we have to disclose that the commission went out in pairs, or singly, to meet with McFarlane representatives to review the options on-site. We did not see Option 5 at that time, but we did see Option 1 through 4, and I myself and Jennifer were there, and then Phyllis, you were there on your own, or?
No, I was there with you.
You were, I was there with Nicolau.
I'm sorry. With Nicolau, that's right. Yeah. And Dr. Bundy was-
Yes.
That's right. So we've all been there. We've all seen it up close and walked away with our impressions. So we've met in pairs, and that's the extent of the disclosure. Yeah. Dr. Bundy?
Additionally, I'd gone back several times with various friends to ask their opinion in regard to it, and I got a lot of different opinions. The concern that some had was with the dark gray and the beige and the dark wood, that it looked a little ominous in their mind, and that a lot of them had different ideas and different suggestions on other colors, but we're not really here to discuss that. So I had thought that the lighter colored, the pale pro dema, might actually, you know, work better with the dark gray and the light gray, but if the rest of the building is gonna be the darker pro dema, then I can certainly be swayed to the using the darker pro dema and Option 3.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Nicolau, I'll start over with you.
Okay. So I'll try to make it quick. My preference is that Number 5. I think that it simplifies and brings together the architectural elements, it's strong as well, and consistency and unification. So I like that. However, so that would be my preferred choice, but I would be very satisfied to also go with Number 3. But I agree, I think that the trim on the top doesn't serve, is not an architectural element, it's just a color, so I wish that it's not there.
So we don't have a representation of Number 3 without that, but nonetheless, it's easy to imagine that being fully heightened.
We could picture it easily.
Right. Okay. So 3 without the stripe is your second choice?
Exactly.
All right. Jennifer?
I agree with Phyllis that I think based on all of the community comments that have come in over numerous meetings, that moving away from the lighter pro dema makes sense. So I would also support not forwarding Options 2 and 4 to Town Council. I think that Option 3, I like the accent color of the dark at the top. I think it, it's hard to tell from the picture, but I believe those clear stories at the top set back from the, from the front facade, so I think that it helps break up the monotony of a single color, but I think you could go either way. I think overall, I'm supportive of Option 3, as is.
Great. All right. Thank you. For my part, I believe that Option 3 is very viable, but the, I do think that the horizontal layer of color is important to breaking down the facade to be a towering facade as Option 5 presents. So that creating a horizontal design band across it is important. That occurs elsewhere in the project as the vertical heights are broken up by either depth of building or some other feature, and this sort of creates that step in color or appearance. So I would go Option 3, but I have as a second favorite Option 2, simply because I think that without the existing greenish color, that the pro dema in the lighter color works well. So that's my second choice, but I would vote for Number 3. So I think we have some consistency here. So we can make for a recommendation, I think, with a, just on the listing of options here, we have five options, five commissioners that would say Number 3 is acceptable. So with that said, are we gonna make a motion on this as a motion to recommend to the council that Option 3 be the preferred design, color design, and that that's what we would prefer straight out without a second option at this point, I think? Do we, do I hear that motion from anybody?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Please make the motion.
I make the motion that we forward to the Town Council our preference for Option 3.
I second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Metcalf?
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Are you unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you. Simple work of a long wrought item. Thank you for contributing to this discussion. Okay. Okay, so with that said, we have a short agenda tonight, so we would move directly on to reports from commissioners and the director and tentative agenda. So I attended the last town council meeting. Does anybody have any other reports before I go into that?
I just, if I may, the governor's plan to, I guess you'd call it reduce, release was the word he used. Release the options and zoning rules that we had in our town or any town, if it was affordable housing, has died with this session of the legislature. What it has caused is the fact that the $400,000, the $400 million he was willing to put into affordable housing is not going to be released at this point. The problem is, as we rejoice over the fact, we don't have a problem with having our zoning choices taken away, is the next session of the legislature will start in January. And my understanding from talking to people in his offices, he intends to bring it back once again.
Okay. Thank you for that, Phyllis. That's an important bit of news for us. So in the council meeting, Mr. Bracken reported that Mace Ridge has reopened negotiations for the gravel lot. Secondly, our note to us is that 1421 Casa Buena had a pre-construction meeting, and they're underway. They're going to move some earth before the deadline, so they got to get some grading done, and I believe that's what that's all about, get their grading done. And he also said that Mr. Wolf and the town attorney were working on the Tamil Vista corridor language. That's going to...
I'll get to that in my, my report shortly.
Sure. And then, in the consent calendar, they adopted the amendments to the planning commission rules and procedures as presented to the council. And finally, the biggest note is that they're going to bring back for discussion, the election discussion, on the years for discussion. So attend the next meeting if you want to input on what they're going to talk about for changed calendar for elections. Phyllis made a comment as to what the state law is and what it permits. Very helpful in that way. So that's all I have to report. And Mr. Wolf?
If I may just clarify so people know, you and I know what you're talking about, the others, a state law says that by 2024, all local elections that have 2022, thank you, it's, oh, our 2024, 2022, local elections that have 20, more than 25% drop in the number of people who vote will have to be changed to even number each years. And the choice was November or June, and the council has decided to go with June because the November ballots are particularly long. All of the state propositions are on that.
Thank you, Phyllis. That's clarifying. I didn't think to mention all that, but you know it by heart. So thank you.
Oh, yes.
All right, Mr. Wolf?
Sure. So, yeah, yes, the big thing that we've been working on, or I've been, yeah, staff's been working on, has been preparing the zoning ordinance amendments for Tamil Vista corridor. So in fact, and preparing the SEQA documents and environmental review that goes along with that. So actually, as of tomorrow, you'll be receiving a notice. As you, as you know, this sort of bleeds into the next agendas, but we are on track for making, having our next hearing be a discussion and possible recommendation to adopt new zoning for the Tamil Vista corridor. So tomorrow, we are going to release the notice of intent to adopt a negative declaration. As well attached to that will be the proposed new mixed-use zoning district for that area. So excited for all of you to see it and the public to see it and comments. It shouldn't be surprises. Obviously, that's one of the reasons why we went through a long process with many, many public meetings, is to let everybody know the direction we're going in. And you will see it. It's a little bit, gets a little bit challenging, obviously, to take those concepts and put them into code language, but I think we've vetted it quite a bit, and I'm pleased with where we are at this point. So you'll see that tomorrow. Also, a note, we have, I guess we, we are in the process of finalizing the hiring of a new building official. So that is, I believe I've mentioned in the past, but Mark Flatter, our current building official, is retiring in October, early October. So we're going to be making, be able to make a nice, smooth transition once he's, he leaves. And other than that, you mentioned, I guess I can elaborate a little bit on 1421 Casa Buena. We did have a pre-construction meeting for that project where we sat down with the representatives from Ryder Homes, had a very lengthy and, I think, good conversation about our expectations through this process and working with neighbors. They will be having a liaison. They have met with Patty Stolier and the homeowners association, will continue to do so, working with neighbors behind them and so on. So, you know, but requires vigilance, and we'll be, we'll be working closely to make sure that this goes smoothly. As smoothly, as smoothly as mid-scale or medium-scale construction can, can go in a tight site. But we're thinking about all different sorts of considerations in the preparation, preparation for that.
May I ask you a question about that project?
Yep.
So in the final documents from us and this, in the SEQA documents, there were a number of conditions
Yes.
that pertain to sort of pre-construction and habitat removal, all that kind of stuff. Those have all been monitored. Is there a record of that so far?
Absolutely. Yes.
Great. Okay. And does, when does that report of that get released? At the end of the project or at some point during the project? For the items prior to construction?
Well, they are monitored as they go on, and they won't be able to proceed with their, getting their building permits, just the same way any condition of approval that the commission puts on a project, won't get building permits unless they do certain things by the time set and those conditions. The mitigation, monitoring, reporting program's the same, same thing. So for example, the, they had a certain time period in which they could remove trees, and they adhered to that. And, and had a biologist report on nesting birds before they were able to remove trees. So that was, I was directly involved in making sure that happened. And Public Works gets involved with a lot of other measures related to grading and drainage and things like that. So we are continuing to follow that. We're making sure that all those conditions are very clearly, that was one of the reasons, obviously, for the pre-construction meeting, is to go over those conditions very clearly, explain everything that's there for them. Those go on now. We ensure that all those conditions go on, front page of the plans, the plan set that are at the site. In this case, there are several pages of those, so, but they're, they're prominent. We have a special building inspector, I shouldn't call it a special inspector, I, as I am learning something else, but we have a designated building inspector who will be monitoring as well those, those aspects of the conditions. And it's getting very familiar with all of them, so.
All right. And for some of our discussions, is there any notice that they'll put up front for contacting anybody?
Absolutely. We, I did raise that with them, and they will be having, they'll have a sign out front that will, similar to what Mill Valley does, and have a big announcement of who they are, who the person to contact, hours of construction, et cetera.
Thank you. Phyllis?
I just wanted you to clarify something. This designated building inspector, this is someone who is not on salary? This is someone who's brought in for this project?
That's right.
Okay. I just, I wonder what you meant by the term.
We've worked with, recently, on other projects. Yes.
Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, Adam, I wasn't on the commission when that was approved, and with the modifications on 1441. Were they, was 1421 asked or required to put in a sidewalk?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for Mr. Wolf? All right, then, we're done with reports. And does anybody have anything, or should we say anything about the possible agenda? Anything you want to say about it, Adam?
No, I mean, obviously, some of this is still in flux besides the zoning amendment, but we will update. The reason is just, it's tentative, but we'll update as needed and let you know as we get closer, see if these are firmed up.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Phyllis.
We got an email today, a notice about something on Mohawk.
Mm-hmm.
That is the one that staff was working on, but they came before us anyway to hear about. Is, if I have the right?
For a different issue, but yes, for a different issue.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any problem now with having the parking space? Has there been?
There may be.
So staff is reviewing that, and that's what the notice...
It's nothing, nothing's been, again, it's a notice, so we'll see.
They haven't undone that yet.
What?
It's in their hands.
Yes.
That's what the notice says, so. Okay, moving on to the minutes, the planning commission meeting minutes of July 12th. Do we, does anyone have any modifications to those before we ask for a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right. That's a voice vote. Adam?
Oh, say all in favor.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Planning Commission meeting minutes of July 26th. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, the meeting minutes of August 9th, 2016. Any comment or motion to approve?
I have a comment.
Yes?
Page two, Mr. Moore said staff believes Fish and Wildlife Service and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers have approved the project rather than "and." Middle of the page. And then, middle of three, Carla Gondin said she disagreed with the conclusions of the should be negative declaration.
Sorry, where is that again?
Native.
Native.
That is page three, paragraph five.
We should put some numbers on this. One, two, three, four.
Carla Gondin.
Okay.
Six.
It's the second sentence, first word.
And on...
See in paragraph five. It starts with Carla.
Negative, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then, page four, Commissioner Bundy suggested the pier is moved towards the west of the property and, and a portion constructed parallel to the house. And that was not, that was on paragraph six.
All right.
One, two, three, four.
Page four. And what I was suggesting was that the takeoff for the pier be moved west towards the deck off the bedroom and, and come out from there as I believe was proposed. But this would be able to then move the whole structure over potentially five to 10 feet.
So it's not a parallel construction?
Not parallel.
Right. So the initial point of connection is just further to the west?
Further to the west, correct.
Okay. So if we, if we strike, if we, can I just suggest, you say, he suggested takeoff for the pier is moved west, no, toward the, to the west of the, to the west?
To the west, next to the deck off the bedroom.
Okay.
Just to describe it better.
So stated any other revisions to these notes?
No.
All right. Move to approve as noted. Anyone?
I'll move as amended.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, with that said, do we hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We are finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.